Welcome to the December 26th County Commission Meeting. If you'd stand for the pledge, please.
... of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everybody to silence their cellphones. And if you need a listening device, Carol or Craig could help you with that. And the meeting documents are at the end of the podium, so to speak. Item number one in routine business is to consider a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item two is to approve the minutes from 12:19.
So moved.
Second.
It's a good thing you two get along today. We have a motion and a second to approve the 12:19 commission minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item three is bills to be paid of $913,323.23.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Any, Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, for the last time this year, I'll comment on the bills. So today's bills include more money going out on the Rodney Burgett case of another $2,700. And there was one individual that, in the medical bills, that cost us $30,000.
Always lots of public safety related issues. Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item four, reports as a register of deeds official statement of revenue collected for November. Item five, personnel actions, consider a motion to approve routine personnel action.
That's my motion.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any comments? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. No applications for abatement or notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, or no petition for compromise of lien. Now would be the opportunity to make a public comment on any item that's not on the agenda. Item 10 is a public hearing and a second day, second reading on the amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Benihana County. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. Scott Anderson, County Planning Director. Today is the second reading and final adoption of a rezoning request that's been before the Planning Commission. This is for rezoning 17-5. It's to rezone approximately 11 acres from A1 agriculture to C commercial. The property is located at 267-674-66th Avenue, which is what we would call Wild Water West. I think most of the community is familiar with Wild Water West. The applicant is requesting to rezone this to commercial to do some further developments in, which would be hand in hand with the existing commercial development that's there. This has been advertised in the papers for a hearing today by the auditor, the Planning Commission. This also had a hearing in front of the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission recommended approval on their, at their November 27th meeting. And those minutes I have included for your review. I can show you a couple of slides. It's bare ground, but it'll give you at least an idea of what side of the water park it's located on. So, do you want me to move them? I can do that. So this is the location. It's basically at, near the intersection of 41st Street and Highway 17. And you can see Wild Water West directly to the south. And then the, the box in the red is the 11 acres that is going to be, proposed to be rezoned and then developed commercially sometime after the approvals are obtained. So what they're, what the applicant's proposing is a stage to do some, like a performance stage. And this shows where the location of that stage is going to be. And that will be heard in front of the Planning Commission at our next meeting, so. This just shows, it, this is the property, and you're looking directly south at the existing Wild Water West recreational facility that's there. This is the site. You can see it's basically just open field pasture at the moment. And that is it. I will go back to the slide which shows the, I guess we'll leave it at this one. I'd be glad to answer any questions, but this is a public hearing, and the applicant is here if you have any questions.
Do you want to have any questions for Scott?
Just a comment, partially question. Scott, as I recall, there were, were no opponents at the meeting on this.
No, there was not.
So this was not controversial at the Planning Commission?
And the Planning Commission had a discussion about the appropriateness of this commercial development. I mean, we're seeing commercial development along this area. You have it up at the corner. We recently rezoned Blue Haven Barn area. So, I mean, this is an area where there is commercial activity occurring.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so we'll listen. If there is anyone who would like to make comments, Mr. Phillips, would you like to make any comments before we go to the opposition, if there is any? You'll need to come to the mic, though.
My name is Francis Phillips. I'm the general manager of Wild Water West, and we've been contemplating several additions out there. Every so many years, we like to, we like to diversify a little bit. And what we're, we had gone to, we had hosted Lifelight Music Festival for about five years, and then they went down to Worthing, South Dakota, on a piece of property there for the last seven years. Well, they kind of disbanded their big festival. Now they're doing a local. And so what we did is we went to their public auction. I'm thinking this was in October. And we purchased a stage and a Quonset building, and a lot of their electrical and whatnot down there. I think we repurchased a lot of the stuff. We donated to them on the front side. Anyway, I'm not sure about that. But either way, so when Lifelight was out there, we spent a lot of, excuse me, we spent a lot of, you know, a lot of energy to develop this north piece of our, of our property with Lifelight and got to thinking, after they were there a year or two, we got to thinking, this is, this is kind of a neat area for, for them. And we were hoping at some point to piggyback on, you know, our, our combined efforts to one day do our own festival ground, kind of a multi-purpose festival facility. We do get a number of people that call us, asking us if we, you know, hold concerts. There are people who, especially, you know, bands that aren't real big, they have called us saying, gee, we can't necessarily afford to go to the arena or to the fairgrounds, but we'd certainly like to hold an outdoor festivals, you know, spring, summer, fall. And, you know, we'd look for an area. And we, we trenched in during Lifelight period, a tremendous amount of three-phase power, and did a lot of dirt work. We owned caterpillars and backhoes and all that. So during the Lifelight time, that was, that area there was kind of hill and dale and whatever. So we did a lot of work on the ground for drainage and power and all of that. And like I said, our hope was, our hope was at one point to, to develop that property into a festival ground. And the, the impetus there for us was when Lifelight had their, had their auction, we're like, you know, this might be the right time for us to go and, and gobble up some of the things that they had had and, and do our own property. So we chose that area directly north of the water park, which you can see is substantially west of Highway 17, where the boxes there would be the festival ground. The stage would be kind of in that bottom left corner, facing at a 45 degree through that festival area. So the whole ground does kind of slope toward that stage. And we're staying far enough off of 17 that, you know, it doesn't, you know, impact anything. We have, you know, adequate roads in and out of the water park anyway, and that's what be, that's the roads and the parking that would be used, you know, at Wild Water West. There are days where we'll have four, five, six thousand people out there, you know, in any given day. If it rains, nobody shows up. But on the good side, you know, we can pack that park pretty well. No accidents coming or going. There was a north entrance into the park that is closed now. It's only for agriculture, because we hate that area there. So people come and go from the main entrance of the water park. If we were to have festivals, yeah, I think, you know, we'd, we'd have probably in the evening. So, and we've done, we've, you know, we've had a, had some festivals in the past, smaller things. I don't know if you remember the, oh, what was that, where they dressed up in those costumes? What was that?
Renaissance?
Oh, yeah.
Renaissance Festival. We did that, yeah. And every time they would come out, it would rain about six inches.
Oh, jeez.
So, yeah. But even that, yeah, that, that was kind of fun, fun to do. So anyway, that's what our plan is, is to, you know, take this strip of ground here and, you know, develop it into festivals. We also get large corporations, you know, like Citibank and some of the big areas that, that would like a big area for their own staff, and they would rent some bands or do some things. So I, I would see that as time goes on, it would be a nice multi-use festival ground that, that we could use. Any questions about the project?
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have another question for Scott eventually.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to speak either for or oppose the project? We'd like to hear from them now. No one's coming forward, so Commissioner Barth?
Scott, the existing water park is zoned ag, right?
That's correct.
Wouldn't we want to fix that at some point and make it commercial?
Well, we could, but, I mean, that's really something that is developed, driven by the developer. So if they would like to come in sometime and rezone it, we would do that. We would, you know, help them through that process. And I just want to make a clarification for the County Commission and the audience, that today we're just looking at the rezoning request.
Yeah.
And the development that Mr. Phillips has outlined is going to be considered by the Planning Commission at our next meeting. But the, the first piece of this, of this process is to get the zoning in place, and that will allow commercial uses to occur. So I'm grateful that he's explained to you what, what's going on, or what his future plans are. But today, we're just looking at rezoning this from, from agriculture to commercial, so.
Thank you, Scott. Any other comments? If not, I'd look for an amendment or a motion for the amendment?
I'll make a motion to amend the 1990 revised zoning ordinance to change this from A1 agricultural to C commercial, from A1 to C commercial, sorry.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, there's a motion and a second to approve the amendment for the revised zoning. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Good luck with your project. Item 11 is to consider a motion to authorize the 2017 budget supplements using department personnel savings. Kim Adamson, good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners Kim Adamson from the Auditor's Office. We have a number of different supplement actions for your consideration this morning. This first one is to use personnel savings to offset other budget items in various department budgets. We have a list of five requests here. One from the Auditor's Office to use $5,000 for office supplies and some advertising related to employment. For JDC to use $23,500 in order to replace some radio equipment and floor mats at the detention center. For juvenile alternatives, to use $50,000 to offset their LSS contract costs for shelter care. For the public defender to use $74,000 for expert witness costs for 2017. And lastly, for the State's Attorney's Office, to use $40,000 for higher costs of blood drawl and chemical analysis, blood withdrawal and chemical analysis, and some publishing fees.
Thank you. Questions for Kim? Commissioner Heiburger?
I have several questions, and I apologize, Kim, for not talking to you ahead of time. I finished reading these things last night. So my questions were on the JDC requests, and I have talked to the director a little bit on this, too. So he's requested to replace some radios that are in his long-term budget. I realize you're not supposed to take budget savings from one department and move it to the other. Last year, we had JDC, and the alternative budgets were one budget, so then last year it would have been easy to do. By not spending this extra $23,000, it will go back to the general fund, and that money still could cover costs, alternatives, because we would be just covering it out of the general fund, because our alternatives to detention fund is short $100,000.
That is correct. There are some personnel savings in the alternatives budget that will partially offset that $100,000 shortfall. But we would still need a supplement to the juvenile alternatives budget to cover that $50,000.
Correct. But at least we wouldn't be spending 20-some thousand dollars of money that we have that's budgeted for in 2018.
In the juvenile detention.
So that's my dilemma here, is that, so where's the bottom line on our budget? And is this worth spending, or should I be saving this for my general fund to spend it where it's needed and keep these items in 2018, 19 budget?
And that's truly a decision that is up to this board to determine whether you want to authorize that additional spending for juvenile detention center.
Okay.
I, I mean, I can report to you that countywide, we have personnel savings of about a million dollars, which is consistent with what we see annually based on delays in hiring and turnover in various staffing areas, so.
Maybe I could ask Jamie a question?
No?
Oh.
Go ahead.
Jamie, can you come up, because I could ask you a question, sorry?
That's fine.
Good morning. Jamie Grabot, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center.
Thank you, Jamie. Jamie and I spoke just briefly before the meeting about the radios, and they are in 18 and 19's budget. Is that correct?
Yes. There's going to be an ongoing replacement schedule over yearly after that, but replacement over three years is what was the plan.
And, and then my, my other question was, well, you had mentioned that some had broke now, so that you did need some. So maybe we need to replace a few of those radios? And the other one is that I questioned at this time, and I think that it needs to be a longer conversation, is whether every single person needs a radio, or whether we have them enough for a shift. But I think that's a longer conversation between Jamie and I and the needs of this department. So I'm, at this point, I'm not in favor of approving all 52 radios, because I think there needs to be more of a conversation than me reading it on Christmas night.
I understand.
Yeah.
Do you have any input on sharing of the radio issue?
We current, that's currently what our staff have been doing. From shift to shift, they share. So we're charging half during one shift, and then the next shift comes on, and they get, trying to get the other half charged properly. Over the last two years, we've lost 10 radios to different problems. And now it, it makes it a little tighter, but we can make it work. With the budgeted amount for 2018, we can add, I believe it's seven radios is our plan. Or 10 radios, I'm sorry, 10 radios. The, the idea with the 52 radios is that we're going to be changing brands, and we want to make sure that they're compatible with our existing radios, which we believe they will be. The, the brand that we're changing to is more durable. We've done, I've called several local jails and the South Dakota State Penitentiary, and have found that the one at the South Dakota State Penitentiary seems to be the most durable.
I have one other question. The state's in the process of deciding what to do with the state radio system. When is that supposed to be completed? And do they, do they communicate with the radios you're talking about?
No. These are internal radios for, within the building. They are not part of that project whatsoever.
Other questions? Sorry, might have jumped ahead of you guys.
No, I'm still not sure what I want to do with this.
Well, I can't make a motion, so.
No, I know.
If you could, what would it be?
What are your thoughts on it? I would, I would appreciate your thoughts on this.
I think I would approve half of the radios at the most, but 10 a shift would be probably more appropriate.
And I'm not sure I want to approve half, because half is, of his 52, which they don't have 50, how many do you?
10 a shift would be 20.
Right. So that, if he's losing 10 a year because of malfunction or whatever, if we gave him half, he'd have some to replace those. It'll probably be broken, or it won't work in the future, and still have enough to cover his 10 radio a shift need.
How many radios do you get January 1st, though?
10.
So then we're giving him 20.
Okay. Then you could make a motion to take 10 out of that.
So right now, you're asking for 52?
Yeah. The idea was that I would assign them to each individual staff, and they'd be responsible for them. If they're not taking care of them properly, they'd be, I'd be looking to hold them accountable for replacement. Some of the, the damage that is done is because of improper handling. Some of it is un, there's nothing that they can control in the situation. If we get into a restraint, it gets knocked around, something to that situation, but some of it is due to proper, improper handling. So that, that was my idea on assigning each individual staff their own radio.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that there is, if you have more than one kind of radio, then you have a logistical issue going on. And actually, I had a job where I shared weapons with other employees, and it turned out to be somewhat hazardous. Someone put a gun away that was still loaded, and it wasn't me. I mean, I get, I get it, and it was, so potentially, if you have your own radio and there's damage to it, you know, it's attributable to, you know, Jeff. Whereas if we share it, and there's three different people have handled it since yesterday, I, I think we should either get half of them, 26, or else get all of them and be on one logistical trail. Parts, batteries, supplies for two different, you know, things, I think becomes a problem. That's why, you know, I think we're better off if we, if all of our police cruisers are the same model, et cetera. So I, I don't know. I'm, I'm willing to hear what you guys think, my comment.
We have to come to consensus, because this is the end of the year, and there's three of us, and...
I have another question. Why do we have so many radios that are damaged or used improperly? It doesn't seem like that shouldn't be a correctable thing.
It's, it's sloppiness with staff and dropping them, and it's different ways that people connect them to their uniform. If we went to a uniform pant style that they have to wear, there'd be less dropping. Some wear pants where the pockets aren't as strong, and then they're, they're not held as securely to their body, and they can fall off.
Maybe we need to look at stronger belts or something, you know, that hold the, cases that hold the thing. I'm still not okay with doing all of them. Next year, you get a free, you get 10 additional ones, so I guess I would be okay, I will concede.
Concede?
Concede.
That's not a motion.
I know it's not. I'm telling you what I'm thinking. I would concede to doing 10 this year, because you'd get 10 this year and 10 next year, and, and I think that you as, and I as liaison will have a conversation about whether we need radios for every person. We can discuss that, because he's still got some in the budget for next year, and then he also wants mats, which are in the 2018 budget, or they are not?
They are not currently in the 2018 budget.
Well, I don't think you conceded enough, but I'll make a motion to buy 10 radios.
We also have the, okay, well, we'll do the radios first. I will second the motion for 10 radios.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve 10 radios for JDC. Any other comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman?
In favor?
Oh, go ahead.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
The second issue is that they have $2,500 worth of matting that...
They're foldable gym floor mats is what I'm looking for. I did not put them in the 2018 budget. That was one of the things that I trimmed out, trying to stretch another year out of them. They are getting pretty ragged. We use those for training of staff, and then also for certain games with youth in the gym.
Is there any questions for Jamie?
I'll make a motion to approve the mats.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the mats. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Good?
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you, Jamie, for coming.
I just, then the rest of the funds from the JDC budget would end up in the general fund, which would help to, not that it does, but offset the cost that, by separating those two different budgets. And that really was my point.
Yep.
May I ask for one point of clarification? The approval of 10 radios, what cost do we assign to that, so that we know exactly what our supplement will be?
Jamie?
Okay, so $4,000.
If you wouldn't mind, at some point, and I don't need it now, you said there was approximately $1 million in personnel savings?
Yes.
Can I have that summarized some point by department?
I do have a report I can share with the...
I'd love to see that.
With the Commission to see that.
I think that has a direct effect on our budgeting process, and it seems to happen every year, and we know, we know that there's always turnover, and we're looking for individuals or bringing people back. But that should help us in the conversations about balancing a budget. If we continually have that kind of turnover, we shouldn't be off by a million bucks.
Well, that is something that we consider when we make our recommendation to cash applied. So we're trying to compensate for that as we make our recommendations on cash applied.
But the reason for me wanting that, as you already know, is the fact that we're, we have that number continually, and I'd like to see what that is every year for maybe the last three to five years if we can, because that can help us in our budgeting process for 2019.
Certainly.
Thank you.
We're going to need a motion to, to complete our budget supplements.
Yep. I'm wondering if there's any conflicting conversation, if you will, on the rest of it, or should we take each of these individually?
I don't have a conflicting comment, but I do have a comment.
Why don't we have that now? Go ahead.
I, I just would point out that some of these other expenses, whether it's the public defender, the State's Attorney, the Sheriff's Department, these are the expenses which every year come and bite us, so to speak, the court costs, et cetera. The, and these costs, in my opinion, anyway, being paid for by property tax when alcohol is such a large cost of, or cause of these problems is, is a sad deal, I think. And I drink plenty, as I've repeatedly said, and I've been repeatedly told. The, it just seems to me that, you know, beer, alcohol is probably the original gateway drug, and whether it leads to methamphetamines or fatal car wrecks, its, its impact is underrated by, by people, but we have to pick up after the party's over. And these hundreds of thousands that we're chipping in on these budget items are part of picking up after the party.
Any other comments? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just have a question for Kim. So, Kim, I'm reading this, the juvenile detention alternative requests, personal savings for, for partially offset the LSS, the amount of $50,000. But we've used all the monies in the alternative budget now. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I have a comment, and I don't want to dilute what the other comments have already been said, but in a $45 million general budget allocation for 2017, if, if we're allocating $200,000 out of that budget, that's really good budgeting. Frankly, that's less than two one-hundreds of a percent, so it sounds like a lot of... So it sounds like a lot of money and it is a lot of money, but two hundredths of one percent on that kind of a budget is really an excellent job by not only the staff, but the department heads and everybody that's involved. And really, the only time we ever see dramatic variances in the budget is in the personnel line item. And that's one of the reasons I asked the question because I'm hopeful that that will help us in June and again in September to be able to balance a budget with maybe a little less strain if we see patterns of the fact that we have more turnovers than we would like to have for certain, but we aren't allocating enough of that portion to be able to support the operating budget. So thank you and to your staff for all the hard work.
I think the, I think the department heads deserve a lot of credit for really being very conscientious in establishing what their budgets requests are.
Absolutely did. Yep, thank you. I gotta get back to my place.
So do we need a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve?
Yep, we do.
That would be my motion then to approve the other supplements.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the remaining items as printed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item twelve is to consider a motion to authorize a twenty seventeen budget supplements for contingency fund transfers for pre-trial services and juvenile alternative diversion programs. Thank you.
Yes, if you recall, in twenty seventeen, we budgeted a higher contingency amount than we typically have in the amount of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. At the time that budget was established, it was assumed that we would use the majority of that budget to fund the pre-trial services program, which was to begin in twenty seventeen. That startup did not occur until late in the year, so we are requesting a sup, to move sixty-nine thousand dollars from that contingency fund budget to pre-trial services. In addition to that, there was an award to the Boy Scouts of America that was approved earlier this year in which we would also propose using fifteen thousand dollars of the contingency fund to fund that request.
Anybody have any questions about those? I will just make a comment. I had the ability a couple of weeks ago to sit down with the people at the Boy Scouts office and talk about the RISE program. And to me, that's one of those programs that will keep young men and now women out of frankly our systems that are good programs for education at an early age to be able to make a difference before they start following the wrong path. And it's a very small investment for what we're going to receive out of it. Commissioner?
Pigtails off of that, too, is that for successful diversions out of the state's attorney's office that are completed, we do get reallocation of money from the state of South Dakota. And I don't remember the number that we had completed this year, but I think we got around fifty thousand, close to fifty thousand dollars of money back from the state for completed. And that's where this, ultimately, kind of where this money comes from is that we reimburse the people that are running some of those programs. Some of the other money goes to alternatives that we run, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Is there a motion to allow the budget transfers for these operational budgets?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the listed items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item thirteen is to consider a motion to authorize the following twenty seventeen budget supplements using grants, donations, and reimbursements of three hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and fifty-one cents to various county budgets.
Yes, this is the third category of supplements we approve annually. Supplements related to donations, grant awards, and other types of cost reimbursements. This first group are, cover a number of different departments. The first being from the general fund to the commission budget, fifty thousand dollars related to the innovation grant that was received in twenty seventeen. Secondly, from the general fund to the human services budget, we have a number of requests. One is from the, an exercise account for two hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty-five cents. It's just vending machine receipts that are used for an exercise room in the human services building. Secondly, bus passes in the amount of one thousand seven hundred and fifty-four dollars, representing donations coming from other organizations in the city. Thirdly, donations of four thousand dollars that were received by human services. And lastly, donations to Safe Home in the amount of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-five dollars and sixty-six cents. The next category is from the general fund to the planning budget. There was twenty thousand eight hundred and twenty-five dollars received from the city of Sioux Falls in order to share costs of pictometry for twenty seventeen. We also have a request from the general fund to the public defender budget, twenty thousand dollars that came out of the Gideon's Promise Grant Award with Hofstra University. Request for pass-through grant, from the pass-through grant fund to the hospital preparedness grant for one hundred and twelve thousand five hundred dollars and for the Indian Child Welfare Act professional services in the amount of one hundred and eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars. And that's in total all of our donations and grant awards.
Thank you, Kim. Anyone have any questions about those? Commissioner Heiburger?
Just a comment.
Sure.
And that is that the pictometry reimbursement from the city came from our meetings with the city council people, people from our staff or from our commission and staff meeting with city council people this last year, able to work out a contract with the city, which was great. So we're no longer paying our part and they're paying, we're not, no longer running separately. We're running together, which was great collaboration between the two. Appreciate the city working with us.
Any other comments? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve those various pass-through accounts to the budget line items. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item B is the sheriff's office, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and one cent from various department revenue ASNs to various department expenditures. Mr. Bosman, how are you?
Good, commissioners. Good morning to you guys as well.
Good morning.
Lieutenant Joe Bosman with the sheriff's office. Come this morning to present different revenue amounts that we have received as reimbursements or maybe payments as part of like grants or fees that we have received and then requesting that they get supplemented into our expenditure ASNs for twenty seventeen.
So you want to have any questions for Joe this morning? Hopefully you had a quiet weekend, so you didn't spend too much of it.
Not too bad.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the two hundred and eighty-five thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and one cent from the department revenues to department expenditures. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item C is emergency management, three hundred and two thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars and seventy-six cents from various department revenue ASNs to department expenditure ASNs. Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. Lynn Young, Emergency Management. This is a typical end-of-the-year supplement for us from the Homeland Security, fatality management, and then the hospital preparedness program. So be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Lynn? Commissioner Barth?
So Lynn, is this the supplements that help with the payroll in your department?
No, this one is different than that because they're in a different federal fiscal year. But that grant, as a reminder, provides for fifty percent of salaries for all three individuals within my office. So that's different than this. We'll come back later.
Any other questions for Lynn? Is there a motion to approve? There is.
Second.
A motion to approve the emergency management department revenue ASNs to the department expenditure ASNs. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item fourteen is a public hearing to consider the following twenty seventeen budget supplements, the general fund of three hundred and seven thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars, special revenue fund of twenty-six thousand, five hundred, the building fund of a million, two hundred and fifty thousand, capital projects of a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. Kim, good morning again.
And this is our last group of twenty seventeen budget supplements. We do need to conduct a budget hearing to consider these requests. As was stated on the agenda, we've got in the general fund requests for the coroner of eighteen thousand dollars for transport and lab costs, a request for courts of two hundred and thirty-seven thousand for primarily attorney fees, also commitment costs and interpreters. In juvenile alternatives, a request for an additional fifty thousand dollars to assist with the costs of our LSS shelter care contract. In planning, a supplement of two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars for the cost of nuisance abatements. In the highway intergovernmental fund, a supplement of sixty-five hundred dollars for wheel tax distributions to townships and municipalities. In emergency management, a supplement of twenty thousand dollars for an unbudgeted vehicle replacement. In the building fund, a supplement of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is for the design and construction costs for the museum collections facility, not budgeted in twenty seventeen. And lastly, in the capital projects fund, a supplement of a million, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the jail expansion, which represents the cost of the land acquisition, some building design, and startup construction costs that were incurred in twenty seventeen.
Thank you, Kim. Questions for Kim on these items? Commissioner Barth?
Kim, on the planning cleanup things, those bills then go onto the property?
They do get passed along to the property owner.
So we won't get that money, though, until twenty nineteen?
Probably twenty eighteen.
Okay.
Their build.
That's helpful. And, Mr. Chairman, that's not on the list, but as we know, planning lost one of their vehicles in a motor vehicle accident. And although I don't know that it's settled, I wonder at what point we might want to put some money towards that project of replacing that vehicle. I just mentioned that.
Any other questions for Kim? The million, seven fifty for the land parking building design and construction for the jail expansion is part of the bond.
That's correct. We will, we will be able to do a reimbursement from bond proceeds for that and that is scheduled for this Thursday.
Yep, good. Just wanted to make sure. Any other questions or comments?
Well, if I might, Kim, the planning department, do they have much left over in their budget as far as if we were to move ahead with getting another vehicle?
I don't have a summary of what was left in their operating expenses. Their salary and benefits was about forty-two hundred dollars under budget, that's all. We did not, we did not list that as a twenty seventeen supplement, supplement request just because we don't know yet what our insurance proceeds will be, what our actual costs will be. But it will be something we may want to consider early in twenty eighteen when we do our carryover supplements.
Other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve? No, it's a public hearing, thank you. I knew what you were gonna say. This is a public hearing. If there's anyone that would like to make comments about any of those items, pro or con, obviously. If not, now is there a motion?
We always have such a stampede when we talk budget in this group. But I'll make a motion to approve these reimburse, these items as listed.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget supplements that were listed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item fifteen is to authorize the chair to sign a twenty eighteen per diem agreement for secure and non-secure detention between Minion County JDC partner counties, which are listed, and Lutheran Social Services. Jamie Gravitt.
Jamie Gravitt, Director of the Juvenile Detention Center. This is our yearly contract with our fifteen partner counties for what we're gonna charge for secure detention at JDC, along with community supervision and evening report center for Lincoln County. That's the only county we provide those services to due to the proximity. The amount for each of these items was increased by two percent this year over the twenty seventeen rates. All the contracts were received back from the counties with no questions or concerns. I'd ask that you approve these contracts.
Thank you, Jamie. Any other questions or comments from Jamie? Thanks for doing that and since there were no other comments about the discussion of changing the rate and it's a positive thing.
Motion to authorize the chair to sign this agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign the agreement with the various counties in LSS. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item sixteen is to authorize the chair to sign twenty eighteen agreement between the county and LSS to provide evening report center services.
Lutheran Social Services provides a service of the evening report center as an alternative to holding kids in juvenile detention. Gives us daily contact or almost daily contact with youth that are out in the community but need just a little more assistance. They might have some troubles at home or some troubles with school. They're picked up from school, taken to LSS. They're, they do some life skills programming, they help them find jobs, they help them with schoolwork, they give them a meal while they're there, teach them how to cook, how to budget. Then they deliver them home by about eight-thirty at night. We found that this is pretty successful. We even have kids asking the judge to be able to continue this program after they've been adjudicated and sentenced in juvenile court. There currently isn't an opportunity for that to happen, but LSS is working with United Way to try and fund a predisposition or post-disposition option similar to this because of the success, excuse me, the success that we've been seeing in this program. They did not increase the cost whatsoever for twenty eighteen. It has been planned for in the twenty eighteen budget and I would ask you, ask you to authorize the chair to sign this contract.
Questions for Jamie?
Just a comment.
Yes.
It is a very successful program. Jamie described it really well. And the reason that there isn't a post-adjudication one at this point and we're hoping that they will get it up and going is because the county is not responsible to pay for post-adjudication and that's why we don't have one, so.
Do you keep track of the recidivism rate?
I believe Lutheran Social Services does three-month and six-month follow-ups. I don't have that information available, but I could gather that for you.
That'd be nice.
It would be. Any other questions for Jamie? If not, all, like a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the agreement for evening report center services. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item seventeen is to authorize the chair to sign a twenty eighteen agreement between the county and Southeastern Behavioral Health for qualified mental health professional services at the JDC.
Thank you. Again, this is our yearly contract with Southeastern Behavioral Health to provide QMHP services, qualified mental health professionals. They, most of their work is with new admissions that are coming in and are suicidal. They'll come in and assess the situation and give us guidance on what our protocol should be followed while they're there. And then they provide ongoing services for those youth as well. We've been able to incorporate an MRT, moral recognition therapy program at JDC as part of this budget as well. That's a program that's weekly with eight youth, which helps them examine their thought processes and helps them make better decisions and hold themselves accountable. What's nice about that program is it can start at JDC and continue out in the community if they're placed on probation or quite often a lot of the placements that are utilized by the Department of Corrections, if they're committed to DOC, utilize this program as well. So they can start with us and finish either in the community or at another placement. So they can start with us and finish either in the community or at another placement. We have planned for this. They did not ask for any rate increases. And so the costs reflect the same as two thousand seventeen. And I'd ask that you authorize the chairman to sign this contract.
Thank you, Jamie. Do any questions for Jamie on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with Southeastern Behavioral Health. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item eighteen is to consider a motion to supplement Human Services Budget ASN two eleven thirty-seven in the amount of nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents, which represents the first half of the two thousand eighteen Emergency Food and Shelter Program Fund allocation. Good morning.
Good morning. Lori Montes, Assistant Director, Human Services. We have been a part of this EFSP program for many years and have been acting as kind of a pass-through for the money. So we actually don't benefit from this program, per se, other than maybe possibly some indirect benefits in some of the programs that we offer that may be offset a little bit by providing this money. For the third year, we're asking that these funds go to Bishop Dudley Hospitality House. And they will be able to spend that. That's one of the challenges with this money, is that it has to be spent fairly quickly and even more so this year. So we believe by giving Bishop Dudley the whole amount, we'll be able to spend it by the January thirty-first deadline.
Any questions for Lori?
I'm excited about this as usual, but is the, in the past, I think there's been some discussion about the amount of paperwork that the federal folks require. Has there been any decrease in that under the new administration?
Not thus far. Well, we're anxiously awaiting that as well. That's one of the reasons, too, I think, that we tend to try and do it as simply as possible. And so giving Bishop Dudley the entire amount really reduces the amount of paperwork that we have to expend and the time we have to expend in getting that up.
Bless Bishop Dudley House. I'll make a motion to approve this.
Second it.
Motion and a second. Just one quick question. Is this targeted primarily to families or individuals?
It goes to individuals at the shelter. So it could be families as well, but primarily it's individuals.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the supplement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item, nope, eighteen. It's a briefing on the two thousand eighteen contract renewal between the Helpline Center and Minnehaha County Human Services. Or did I miss one?
No, that's right.
Oh, I lost my place. I'm sorry.
So we are just asking, bringing this forward because the Helpline Center has asked for an increase. The amount that we have paid them has remained the same for a number of years. And this year, they asked for that increase from forty-three hundred and seventy-five dollars to five thousand dollars. We believe that this is warranted. They continue to do a great deal of screening of our calls after hours, evenings, weekends, and holidays. And do a lot of listening and support or, you know, kind of defer a lot of those calls so our on-call staff don't end up getting near as many as we would probably have otherwise.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Nope, there's just a briefing.
Does it need a motion? When will this be taken up for final approval?
Mr. Chairman, it seems like a budget request that we get along with other nonprofits on a pretty regular basis. They're the only ones that stampede down here at budget time.
We don't need to take any official action. So you're good.
Okay, thank you so much.
Item twenty is to authorize Sherry to sign a temporary construction easement. I don't know who Sherry is.
Me neither. Must be supposed to be chairman.
I bet that's supposed to be the chairman. Authorized the chairman, who could be known as Sherry. Temporary construction easement, Lot Two, Block Two of Westwood Valley Addition. What a way to go out. Valley Addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners. Carol Mueller, Commission Administrative Officer. Yes, before you is a request for a temporary easement by the city of Sioux Falls. The action requested is to authorize the chairman to sign the temporary construction easement as you've described. On your screen, you can see that there's a small piece of land that is located just a few feet south of Thirty-second Street West and Ellis Road. Ellis Road is going to be going under construction in two thousand eighteen. And the city has asked for a temporary easement so they can access it for the work that needs to be done. And then they will return it back to the shape it's in at this particular point. It looks like this is a piece of property that came to the county. It was part of a development that the developer basically walks away from. And the county ends up getting those pieces, and this would be one of those situations. So the request is to sign that.
Any questions for Carol, Commissioner?
Diverting a little bit as far as who can we give this property to? Bob's here, so maybe he's got a comment for us.
Actually, he's working on that.
He's been really good about getting rid of little pieces of property that we shouldn't have gotten in the first place. But thoughts on this one?
Good morning, Commissioner Heiburger. Thanks for letting me address this issue because it's come up a number of times. And this particular case in two thousand and nine is when this actually came up as a tax deed property. However, at that time, the developer was going through court actions and it was offered to the city. And the city didn't want to take it due to the pending legal actions, which the dust has settled on at this point. And it's looking a lot more attractive. I was in contact with the city office, real estate office, about two weeks ago. And they're indeed looking at taking possession of this property, of accepting it. It's interesting to note that there's, back about the same time that this happened, there's a number of contractors that went broke and situations of this here sort accumulated. And then there's the other thing that, you know, when contractors do a development, there's usually BMPs and PONs and things like that, which are fine if that contractor has an office on there or maintains some of that property. But what they've found out is after they sell all the lots out, they no longer have an interest in maintaining that lot in perpetuity. So they found out if they don't pay the property taxes, it winds up with us. Unfortunately, some of these properties that have liens and things against them have been very complicated. And the cost of doing a quiet title action by the city, they look at it and go, eh, we don't want it. In one case, they own the property. We gave them the property on drainage ahead of it. There's a parcel that the county still owns, and there's one behind it, and the water flows through. And so unless we build a dam or something, there's very little motivation for the city to take possession of those properties. I don't know if there's any liability attached with that due to flooding or anything like that, but that's the situation we're in. However, on this property, the city has indicated an interest. And when they, if they come to a conclusion it's favorable for the county, I'll bring that forward.
Thank you. I would make a motion to approve this easement.
I'll second, but I have a comment, too.
Commissioner Barth?
You know, this is another example of the drainage situation where you chop up these acreages into lots that you sell. And then you have the orphan piece that nobody pays taxes on, no one maintains. And we wind up owning it, you know, a piece three hundred feet long and twelve feet wide. It's, I just don't like it when the developers do it this way. And if I had anything to do with approving these plots, I would resist allowing them to be created over and over and over. Let's give it to the city as soon as we can.
Any other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve the temporary construction easement on that description. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item twenty-one is to consider a resolution to repeal a ninety percent requirement for sale of surplus property. Mr. Dewey, do you have any comments?
He's on the agenda, but I think that I'm actually going to cover it. Craig, do you want to start with it? Do you want me to, do you want me to just do it? Okay, I will go through with this. You're all aware of that. We had a piece of property we tried to sell by sealed bid, and the bid came in at about ninety-five percent of the appraised value. And then we started looking at, we wanted to get a broker. Well, in order to, as you are well aware of, because of South Dakota codified law, because of the way the law is written, if we get a broker, we have to have ninety percent or greater in order to sell that property. Well, so now we're stuck between a forty-five percent bid and a greater than ninety percent bid. The realtors want to make a profit on a piece of, a piece of property. But putting them under these constraints puts us in a bind also. I can take and sell this for a sealed bid for five dollars, and it's okay by South Dakota codified law. I can take this to auction and I can sell it for ten dollars, and it would be okay with South Dakota codified law. But if I get a broker who is a professional and have them help me market this building, I can't sell it unless it's greater than ninety percent of the appraised value. Several people have said, we'll just have it reappraised. Well, so what are we supposed to do? Keep reappraising it until we get it below the ninety-five or the forty-five percent? That doesn't make sense either. As elected officials, I feel like we are smart enough and invested enough in our own taxpayer money to sell this for a reasonable price and to be able to look at all of the data that we have to make a good decision. So all that being said, I have met with probably between around fifteen different legislators so far and pitched this idea that I would like to see us change, I'd like to see legislators change codified law, number six dash thirteen dash five two, I believe, to allow us to be able to work with a realtor in order to sell this property for a reasonable price and to remove that ninety percent. Bringing it to the commission first because I need to have permission from the commission to move forward with, to take this and try to get a sponsor from the legislature and move this forward with the legislature this next year. So that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Any questions for Cindy?
I like it.
Makes sense.
I'm going to make a motion now.
I'll make a motion to approve this legislative suggestion. And I guess I would say, I hope when we go to peer that they don't say, well, it's just a Sioux Falls Minnehaha problem and toss it because Jackson County doesn't have a similar property they're trying to dispose of. We need to get this changed.
Do we, first of all, have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments?
I would say, too, that I did meet with a couple of realtors, too, that will be interested in helping and helping to get the word out across the state of South Dakota. So next week, we'll go to legislators and get a sponsor for our bill.
Thank you. Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Item twenty-two, our liaison reports. Any liaison reports? Twenty-three, new business.
I just wish you Happy New Year.
Thank you. Same to you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd comment under new business because we're coming to the end of this year. We're going to be picking our newspaper, for example, our official newspapers. And, you know, if we didn't have the chamber covering our meetings, I don't know if we would get any coverage at all. And they're here every week. The Argus Leader hasn't been here for once every three months. And I actually went over to the Argus recently. It couldn't get in during business hours. It was like one o'clock in the afternoon. They weren't open. They're ground floor. They no longer have a receptionist. The articles that are published in the paper are all through the Associated Press with a couple of, you know, local ones about city council. But next week, when we are looking at newspapers, I'd like to put a pitch in for the Garrettson Gazette, which is locally owned and is still in business. It may not have a huge circulation, but every time we have something controversial come up, people say, well, no one told us. Well, they're not reading this stuff. But if we're going to support a newspaper, I'd like to suggest a locally owned and still operating newspaper. And I'm just throwing that in about next week. And again, thanks to the chamber. I'd make a comment on our personnel savings that we had this year.
Go right ahead.
I think when, when the economy is bad, then we don't have that savings because people stay. When the economy is good and they can get jobs elsewhere that pay them a better rate, they leave. And then we have some savings. And lastly, I guess next week, when we elect a new chairman, I am available.
Okay. Any other new business? Any old business? Entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
No executive session.